There is a planning commission. Welcome to the April, I mean, May meeting. We have, before we start, we should start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible."
Before we get to the meat of the matter, I'd like to introduce our newest member, M.J. Fruman, at the end here. M.J. comes to us from Tinnicum Township where he was on the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board. So, M.J., do you have any, you have a few words for the, for us?
Sure. So, very happy to be here. I didn't grow up in Radnor, but I got here as fast as I could. My number one job in life is, I'm a proud father of three children, the oldest, which is five years old, which at age 51 is no easy feat, let me tell you. And besides the public service in Tinnicum Township, Bucks County, I also, in my spare time, co-manage a company of about 60 folks in, I think now, 14 different states who sell telecommunications products and services in multifamily dwellings. Again, thank you for your warm welcome. Very happy to serve Radnor.
Thank you, thank you, M.J., welcome. Great to have you onboard. The minute, the minutes from February, I was not at the meeting, and I don't remember, I couldn't add anything to proving them, but does anyone else want to take a shot at it? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes from February?
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the February 7th, 2022 meeting that David had.
Thank you, David.
Seconds.
Aye.
Head.
First discussion item is ordinance 2022-04. It's the introduction of amending the township zoning ordinance to permit parking within the front yard setback for single-family and two-family dwelling units located in residential zoning districts. Kevin, could you sort of set the table for?
Absolutely, thank you. In front of you is ordinance 2022-04. There are two versions. The original version, which was introduced at the Board of Commissioners meeting back in March, and then an alternate version. As we exited that meeting, there were some concerns that were raised at the meeting. So, I took a look at it with John Rice's office, and we came up with an alternative to address some of the concerns that I was hearing from what was being perceived as maybe really an overly broad ordinance amendment. So, that's what alternative B was. Both alternate, both the original version and alternative B had been reviewed by the Planning Commission in Delaware County, and you have in your packet, an April 22 letter from the county planning department that did recommend adoption of alternative B. The meat of the ordinance, in my opinion, is a very straightforward ordinance. The code provisions right now restrict where you can park residential and commercial. What we've noticed over the last couple of months is a severe impact of this regulation to our residents who wish to convert, in the most cases, unusable garage space to usable living space. So, you don't see any difference on the outside. They're still parking, currently parking their cars in the driveway and utilizing their garage for storage space. So, this would allow them to finish that and then turn what is a conforming space out into the driveway. But the current code prevents that from happening and would require them to expand their driveway, which could lead to, it absolutely would lead to an additional impervious coverage, could lead to unregulated impervious coverage, which is the concern. So, the ordinance allows the parking in the front yard setback for single-family and two-family dwelling units. The alternative version B, which is the one that I would recommend moving forward with, one of recommendation, if you're so inclined, limits that to those existing dwellings as the date of enactment. So, new development coming in would not be able to take advantage of this. Developers would have to, you know, work within the limits of the provision to park outside of the front yard setback, but this would address those existing homes that we see in South Devon, the Garrett Hill area, where there's smaller lots, front-loaded garages that are really unusable from all of our experiences. There's one or two that this ordinance would apply to that were usable garages, but for the most part, I'd say 90% of them were unusable garages, either too small or people just not using them because they just couldn't get their car in.
So, what was the, but what actually kicked? I assume you created this yourself, right?
I did, yes.
So, what kicked your action, what kicked you into action mode on this?
Sure. Over the years, this provision would occasionally come up, and we would, you know, deny a grading permit application because that's usually where we would say it. Somebody coming in for an addition, converting the garage, and then that pushes it out, and then I look at it from the grading perspective. But it was kind of onesies and twosies. The course of this year, January, February, I probably denied six or seven of them within a two- or three-week timeframe. And then just talking with the manager and saying, this provision, we're seeing it come back. I don't know if it's just a result of people being in their homes more during the pandemic and just wanting to expand the footprint of their home without expanding the footprint. So, work within the, you know, the existing confines of the home without expanding and getting into stormwater management. So, we're seeing this influx of applications. And generally, when I see something like that in a code provision that is going to continually require somebody to go to the zoning hearing board, kind of take a look at it and say, you know, what are we trying to accomplish here? Is this creating a hardship for our residents? Spoke with manager, spoke with John Rice's office, and we agree that this is something that people should be able to utilize their driveway. You know, just for example, in the R1 district, you'd have to have 80 feet of space from the right-of-way to the front of the house in order to be able to park your car in the driveway because there's just 60-foot front yard. And that just seems like it's a lot. Most homes don't have that, so they're non-conforming. And it just seems like it was creating an unnecessary hardship.
Yeah, I talked to George Nagel today. He's the chair of the zoning hearing board. And that's a body that would do the due diligence right on a residence appeal or where residents concerned.
Yeah, so if, as it stands now, somebody would have to apply for a variance at a $500 application fee plus a survey, plus if they're gonna, you know, we always encourage, if they're not comfortable going to that to argue themselves, an attorney, it could be a couple thousand dollars just to park in driveway where they're already parking.
Okay.
It just, it didn't seem to make sense that the provision was in there. But we were also cognizant of the concerns of, you know, a widespread, spread overuse of this, which is why we tailored it down with the alternative B version.
Yeah, I mean, George Nagel didn't, he wasn't aware of this. So, I was a little surprised because, I mean, the big brains on zoning, I mean, zoning appeals and zoning issues are, is the zoning hearing board. So, I, it just occurred to me that they, I know officially, they're not, they're not, they don't write, they don't write ordinances, but it seemed to me that they should, we should have them in this process in some way. Like?
Well, no, the zoning hearing board really should not be in the process. You know, they are the arbiters of an appeal from this. Most of the applications that we saw, particularly coming into this year, you know, as I was seeing more and more of them, they either got creative and started to look at expanding the driveway, put in some stormwater management, or the projects just stopped. We had a few that just decided not to move forward with it. Others, as we were seeing this, we said, well, look, we're going to try to address this in an ordinance. So, we probably have a half a dozen projects that are just waiting for this to get amended. And, you know, when we introduced it in front of the commissioners, we had a six-one introduction for that. I think that the one vote against it was for reasons, once I looked into it, I don't know that it applies to the area of concern. So, I'll be meeting with that commissioner out in that area to go over how this ordinance doesn't have an impact on the area that he was most concerned about, but does have a drastic impact and helped a lot of his constituents in a positive way.
So, where I live on West Wayne Avenue, people have garages that are front loaders, but they, they're on 3/4 of an acre, and they have, you know, double-sized driveways. They, would they be impacted by this ordinance in any way?
It's hard to say in a blanket statement. Most front yard garages or front-loaded garages that are built to the setback line, if it's a single-car garage, it would be a non-conforming lot. You need to have two parking spaces that are outside of that front yard setback. So, obviously, if it's a single-car garage, one would be compliant, the one is not. If you see two cars parking in the driveway, nobody's utilizing the garage, then, you know, we don't enforce that. It'd be impossible to enforce, you know, unless we got a complaint that somebody's actively, you know, converting the garage without permits. But this would allow them to possibly, possibly utilize their garage if that's what they want to do versus outward expanding of the footprint or, you know, worst case, you know, moving out of the township.
Right. So, one of my, one of the things that bugged me when I was watching the BOC presentation was I couldn't get a sense of how pervasive this issue is in our township. Like, I know the township's different all over the place, and Sean Farkey noted, you know, that there'd be some people excluded from this based on where they are in the township, like in a certain type of district. But he could have gone further with that because I think there's, there's exceptions probably everywhere, right? I mean, you could find a residential issue in almost every zoning classification.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, so, so part of my issue is like, when I think about the future, I think, well, what is going to be the impact of this ordinance? And I'm having a hard time, like, sort of figuring it out, and maybe it's impossible to figure out, but.
I don't see a drastic impact in terms of a widespread, let's just start paving over our front yards, cutting down trees, and putting in parking spaces. I see that this is going to benefit those that are in the Garrett Hill area where there are the smaller lots, front-loaded, single-car garages. South Devon is, those are the two areas where we're primarily seeing this. In the center of Wayne, you have a lot of long driveways that go back to detached carriage houses. You know, the driveways extend well past the side of the house. Those would have no impact. There's no restrictions currently on that. So, people, you know, they have the parking spaces that are well outside of the front yard setback. It's those smaller lots with the front yard, the house built to the front yard setback that usually have a single-loaded garage.
Okay. Maplewood came up, the Submergent Development at the BOC.
Yeah, I don't believe that, and I was looking for, from engineering, an answer as to what that approved. I thought that was a multifamily development when it was built under the terms of how it was classified. So, that would not qualify in terms of this. And that was one of the reasons why we went back and put in the alternative B, so that moving forward, you know, any new development like that, you know, whether they want to classify as single-family or two-family, wouldn't get the benefit of this provision.
Okay, because it doesn't explicitly say that in the language.
Alternative B does.
Okay.
Alternative B, we added a language that pre-existing at the date, sorry, that setbacks and requirements of subsection F shall not apply to single-family and two-family dwelling units pre-existing at the date of enactment of this ordinance.
Okay.
So, the only, only dwelling units that this would not apply to would be an existing single-family home that is in a commercial district. And you have a handful of those down in Burnmore. You have maybe one or two along Lincoln Street Avenue that are residentially used but commercially zoned. So, that would not apply to it. But again, you're kind of very minimal, and, you know, we can't create a zoning amendment that addresses every scenario. So, we try to look at one where we're having the most impact. And then, you know, those outliers, they would just have to go through the zoning hearing board process.
I've said this before, I, part of my, part of the, part of what sometimes frustrates me about the planning process is I feel like we are getting this a little bit on the fly, Kevin. Like, it feels like the planning commission should be, should have more time than we're getting on this to evaluate this and try to, and maybe make our own adjustments. I think, frankly, I think the issue is, I mean, this, the title on this should be, like, how do we deal with garage conversions? Because obviously, garage conversions are driving this. And is, and because garages are all different sizes, all different years, all different, that we should define that better, define better how this applies to garage conversions? Because then that sort of is, you're tackling the problem, you're tackling the problem in a way that you're tackling what is creating other issues. Instead of going, it seems like we're a little bit backwards, worried about the parking issue, the setback parking issue before the garage conversions. But that's just my, that's just one of my things. It's like, I don't.
Sure. And we looked at that and considered that as part of this process. This has been a regulation that's been on my mind for years. We just saw an influx of it. And, you know, it comes down to, you know, are we looking at promoting sprawl on a lot? You know, allowing people, if people want to expand and they want to stay in Radnor because it's a beautiful community to live in and raise a family in, and the footprint isn't working. So, their choice is to utilize existing, the footprint, or expand out. When you expand out, you can do so in a manner that may not regulate or trigger stormwater management requirements. So, even if you were to put a parking space alongside your garage at 10 by 20 to meet the ordinance requirements and convert the garage, that would not regulate trip, stormwater management. So, multiply 200 square feet over, you know, 1,000 homes, you're going to start really increasing the amount of unregulated stormwater management that could create, you know, significant issues. Or pushing the footprint and expanding the footprint. You know, if you're going to leave the garage there, but you expand out the back, now you're really starting to, you know, increase the impervious coverage and the building coverage that a lot of these lots had the ability to do. And while that may, you know, get regulated and checked through the stormwater management process, it's still, you know, creating more sprawl on a lot versus allowing people to better utilize the footprint as it stands now.
One, I'm going to say one more thing, and then I'm going to let someone else speak here. If you walk from the library on West Wayne up toward Conestoga, a lot of the houses, like the ABC House and other houses, have up to nine, 10 striped parking area, parking spaces. Some of those front yards are completely asphalted over. So, what, what is the deal there? Like, what, what, what do we do about that? I mean?
Well, we can't do anything about that. A lot of those are pre-existing. Some of those are non-residential uses. You know, that, I don't know how those came to be. Obviously, the code does prohibit that in many cases or requires some sort of approval process. You know, I don't know. I'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis and go back and do a detailed study. But yes, that's, we've seen some of those, how they came to be. I don't know, they predate me.
Also, we're seeing stuff on like Conestoga where people are actually carving out their yard and parking their car on Conestoga in a couple instances.
That's technically in the right-of-way, so it's not in the front yard setback.
Okay, okay. I'll open this up to the rest of the commission.
Kevin, so I know that this got sort of touched at the last BOC meeting where you brought this up on March 14th, but did you do any additional research about why the original ordinance was enacted in 1992? Any background?
Excuse me, no, I could not find, you know, that some of these things just come to be. I don't know, there was no rhyme or reason that I could find that said, you know, this is why, this was the intent, and this is why we're doing it. I, there's a lot of provisions in the code that way that you just kind of shake your head at now that had all the good intent at the time. 20, 30, 40 years later, you're kind of like, okay, well, that doesn't meet today's needs in once.
Sure. And I guess we can't rewind the YouTube video on it either. Makes sense. With these garages, I'm just trying to picture it. What is the typical dimension of a garage that's being converted?
I don't know. I did go into that detailed study, and some of the ones in the Garrett Hill section, they said they weren't even 10 feet deep. It's a garage space with a garage door that is, you know, you couldn't pull a car in there even if you wanted to if you weren't using it for storage. But we see all sorts of dimensions.
Gotcha. And just for the record, a suitable garage would be, what, 10 by 10?
So, well, for a parking space, it would be nine foot six by 20 is, I believe that it's, we generally go 10 by 20 for, you know, round numbers for a parking space.
Okay, got it. I was just wondering if this was just a homeowner looking for additional square footage or if the garage was indeed unsuitable?
In all the cases that, in 2022, that we experienced, all but one had garages that they were not utilizing. The one ended up having, it was a corner lot. So, unfortunately, they had parking that would have been outside the one front yard, but because it was a, it was technically a side-loaded garage, but took access off of the secondary side street, ended up being a front-loaded on that side, but the garage doors faced the side of the house. But it's still a front yard, and even though there's a huge apron there, you know, they still could, they had enough room to park, you know, eight or 10 cars in the driveway, just, you know, not legally.
Got it. So, how would this amendment play within the Garrett Hill zoning district? So, Article 11A requires off-street parking for two cars for up to a two-bedroom house, and then it goes up, up to four, four required off-streets parking spaces. Nowhere else could I find the same thing, but.
They still would have to, you know, meet the ordinance requirements for the number of parking spaces. I mean, that is what it is. You know, the one area in Garrett Hill that we looked at, I think it's the Garrett Hill Garrett Avenue area, they either have extended driveways that go alongside or the garages where it did not impact any of the, I think there's six homes on either side. I went and I looked at it, that there's no, this ordinance does not impact that one way or another. There's really no ability with the location of the homes to park in the front yard at that point.
Got it. Is it possible, if this amendment is enacted, that folks would start reorienting their driveway? So, for example, put a circular driveway in the front yard or add additional parking spaces?
Anything's possible, is it probable? I don't see it. I don't see, we haven't had a rush of applications that come in and say, hey, I want to expand my driveway, oh, I can't because of this code provision. You know, if people wanted to do that, they're not aware of, you know, a code provision that's buried deep in the zoning ordinance that they're saying, oh, code doesn't allow us to do that. They would have done it or come in and sought approval for it, and we would have denied it. We're seeing this not as a result of people wanting to expand their driveways. We're seeing this as people wanting to, you know, stay within the footprint and better utilize the existing, you know, footprint of their home without expanding it.
So, the typical lot that's impacted by this is front-loaded, obviously, probably narrow, I'm guessing, right? Just trying to picture it. Has there ever been any sort of study of the impact on sightlines if this is enacted? So, what I'm kind of picturing is somebody on a bicycle riding down the street. The entire street has parking, cars parked up to the, up to the limit, shall we say. Somebody's backing out. Wouldn't that have an impact on sightline?
You still have, you know, the cars are not parking in the right-of-way. So, you know, typically between the edge of the cartway, the curb line to the right-of-way line where the cars wouldn't be parking, you know, anywhere from eight to 10 feet. So, there's still room that the cars are not, shouldn't be. You know, we get complaints that cars are blocking the sidewalk, and the police handle that. But you don't have, we're not seeing that issue now. And in many cases, this, you know, people are not utilizing the garages, so they're already parking in the driveway. So, I'm not envisioning this mass exodus of people to come into the township and start converting the garages and take what is a usable garage space that they're currently using for their car and start parking in the driveway. Everything that we're seeing are people are not using their garages now and are parking both of their cars in the driveway. And, you know, you, from those situations, you're not going to see any difference because they're already parking both cars in the driveway. Are we going to have the occasional usable garage space that somebody's using to convert? Sure, but I don't see a huge influx. There's been no indication that, that, you know, all the applications that we've had issues with this year, people were not using their garage space.
Got it. I have nothing further. I would like to, Mary, if it's okay, I'd like to call public comment before we.
That sure makes sense.
Okay, great. I think we know you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Stern. I served on the Planning Commission for eight years with Mr. Kunda. And so, it's very rare for me to come to a meeting and comment on items that are before the Planning Commission, but this one did catch my eye. When I first learned about it, really, my first thought was, why aren't families just seeking a zoning variance? It's the most straightforward and appropriate. You know, there's a specific reason that a person is asking for a variance. I do appreciate, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Kachansky. I mean, he's trying to work with the community and not put additional expenses on a family and the process for going through the zoning hearing board can be onerous. So, I do appreciate the intention, but I do really firmly believe this is an over, this is an overcorrection and will have some negative impacts, unintended consequences. And I think I just heard Mr. Kachansky say that the original parking requirement was put into, in effect, 1993? Mr. Kachansky?
Didn't mention a specific date. I know he's been in for a while.
Okay, so, I did think you said something in the 90s. But I would imagine that most of the homes that we're talking about, I mean, we all know Radnor. We can picture the neighborhoods where there's a small lot, a front-loading garage. Families want to convert, they want additional space. It makes a ton of sense. And, you know, we don't want to unduly burden them. But there might be a way to make a slight tweak to this, you know, to this ordinance and only allow this in the event of a, you know, of a, what's the word I want to use? A permitted, you know, something done under permit, application to do a garage conversion. I mean, just that simple, removing the prohibition from the parking only in these instances when someone's doing a garage conversion instead of the, kind of the widespread, the whole zoning district. I do believe that we will see in certain areas where people have long, single driveways and jockeying cars is challenging. I do think we will start to see some people putting driveways, additional driveway parking spots. And by the way, if you're on Conestoga in the right-of-way, you're not allowed to park there either. So, that's, that's not prohibited. It might not be the front yard setback, but it's prohibited for other reasons. You know, but something as simple as only allowing this in those instances as a garage conversion. Mr. Gemmer, I'm sure he will speak to more specifics. He reached out to me. It was kind of on my radar, you know, as an overcorrection. I think he and I together, I've shared with a couple of you some thoughts about this. And, you know, I just, I think there's probably a way to achieve making this process a little easier for the homeowners without creating an unintended consequence. And I, I do appreciate version B. I certainly think at the very least, go with, you know, at the very least, go with version B because there would be developers who would utilize front yard setback for their visitor overflow parking, and that would increase density. But another step to this, if you really committed to doing this, would just simply be only in the event of a, you know, a permitted garage conversion. Thank you.
Good evening. Kathy Wright, Ward 1, Lenora Avenue. While I was reviewing the Planning Commission agenda for tonight, I read the ordinance 2022-4, amending the township zoning ordinance permitting parking within the front yard setback for single-family and two-family dwelling units in residential. This proposed legislation was initially discussed at the March 14th Board of Commissioners meeting, as was said before, in association with garage conversion applications. But then there's nothing in the ordinance that addresses that. I find it hard to believe that there's a large enough number of garage conversion applications sufficient to warrant changing zoning regulations. I believe that this is a slippery slope. Perhaps the occasional resident wishing to convert a garage into livable area of their home could follow the zoning hearing board appeals process. Or like Susan Stern said, you know, just go before them for this garage conversion, and that would immediately begin that process. Then discussion regarding subsequent parking in the front yard setback could be considered on an individual basis. Changing the zoning code to permit byright parking within residential front yard setbacks to address the building permit applications of a few applicants might be, have unintended consequences. What do the, what do the zoning codes in our surrounding townships do? I would be interested to know what they're facing. Thank you so much for the important work that you folks do.
Hello, good evening. Brian Kiefer from 124 Calvary's Lane here in Radnor. I'm one of the occasional residents that would greatly benefit to this ordinance being enacted. I came to the previous meeting here, the Commissioners' meeting, and myself and another resident, and we spoke. resident, and we spoke. And my situation is such that moving to Radnor, and we started a family, our family has grown, and like Kevin mentioned, you know, really in the pandemic and working remotely, we felt just the, you know, the urge to expand our usable space inside our home without expanding the footprint. And, you know, certainly, I think one of the concerns I'm hearing is maybe with parking, visibility of cars, and impervious, you know, you know, material that affects the stormwater. I think this would actually help mitigate that issue by not causing people to, you know, expand their driveway around the side of their home, which is one way to get, you know, around the current restrictive ordinance. You know, like, when I heard that on my narrow lot, I barely have room on the side of my home to even, you know, meet the code. And I could squeeze it in, but then I'd be, I'd be basically, you know, three feet away from my neighbor's lot. And it doesn't seem like that's a very sustainable method to gaining, you know, you know, the ability to, to convert a garage, which is what I'm looking to do, among the other, I think, five or six applications. You know, ourselves, we just like some additional living space, but I hear another resident was looking to just, you know, use the, you know, the back third of the garage maybe for, you know, laundry, a proper laundry space, mudroom. But as spoken, I don't, you know, I don't utilize the garage parking right now because it's old. It's very narrow. And in the back section, it's actually on a raised slab. It's not, not very usable as parking. So, we use it as storage, which is really the best use for it now. And to be honest, in my area of Calvary's Lane with narrow lots and, and front-loaded garages, people park in the driveway anyway, but that's better than on the road, if you ask me. You know, the issue with, you know, pedestrians or bicyclists, you know, you know, if you get on the driveway, I think that's, should be allowable by code. And I would say other, other townships probably allow for parking in the front setback. Because, and I honestly, you know, I think that if this ordinance was passed, that I would, you know, be more responsible about, you know, you know, not spilling closer to the road, but just parking how I park right now, you know, which is just, you know, five feet from the, from the garage, but not in the garage. And, yeah, I think just looking to, you know, grow with my family, and, you know, I feel, you know, it's the point where, you know, we want to permit, you know, our garage, you know, conversion project. And if that is not something that is allowed, you know, we would consider looking at other districts, you know, where, where there might be wider lots, you know, further, further out. But we love Radnor. We love, we love the, you know, the possibilities of, you know, raising our kids in the school district. And, you know, it's, you know, it's a hot, you know, commodity to buy a home here. So, we definitely don't want to leave. And, but we cannot, you know, find anything with a larger lot. We're at the end of a cul-de-sac, and you can imagine that, you know, our lot goes back, but I think our driveway is only so long that, right now, we can't, we can't get out of this, out of the front setback for parking. So, it's something that, you know, Kevin reached out when the, when our permit was put on hold. And we are just, you know, looking to do it the right way and keep it on hold until perhaps something like this is enacted. And it's definitely, definitely going to benefit me and, and others that I know in the neighborhood. The engineer, the structural engineer who, who worked on our drawings for the permit for our conversion, you know, he also has the same concerns. Mr. Calvary's, he had mentioned that the way that, you know, he would design, you know, projects like this, if this ordinance does not go through, would be to expand impervious by going to the side of the home. And I definitely don't want that. I don't want to be put into that situation where I have to expand the impervious driveway around the side of the home. I'd rather just keep it the way it is and just make use of the interior space and, you know, basically improve upon our, our residence with this provision. So, thank you for your time.
Hi. Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. Like, and I emphasize, Mr. Kiefer, like Ms. Stern and Ms. Wright, my initial impression is, based upon the numbers I'm still hearing, this is, looks like, this is cries out for a variance situation, given the relatively small number, even 20 or 25 over a 15-year period is, to me, is still in that, that area. I know that doesn't help Mr. Kiefer's situation in terms of the additional expense and effort. That's your decision, then, that part of what your recommendation would be? Do we do an ordinance at all, or do you like it the way it is and it should go the way of a zoning hearing appeal? With that said, if the policy decision is made by you, or subsequently by the Board of Commissioners, to say, we want to do something for these folks, the current proposal has some issues with it that not only doesn't truly help the folks it's trying to help in their entirety, but also has a lot more unintended consequences than have been discussed. And I'd like to go over just a few of those real, real quick right now. The first is, parking in the front yard setback is, if you're trying to eliminate impervious, I have a really long driveway, but it's only nine feet wide. In order to park, have a true parking spot, it's got to be nine and a half. So, in addition to getting rid of the garage, you might have to widen the driveway in order to actually create a, you know, 20 by nine and a half feet spaces, whether they're consecutive or not. That's, that's one area where it still might not help them, or they may have to do some additional work. The second is, there are some single-track, you know, left tire, right tire driveways, and a parking spot per the definition in 280-4 needs to be, needs to be dustproof and basically asphalt, for all intents and purposes, the entire way. There are track driveway where that wouldn't help, and some of those tend to be at the places where garages might be, might be converted. The last one, because of the length of the, if you have a single car driveway, two parking spaces are going to take up 40 feet, 20 feet of length for the first one, 20 feet of length for the second one. And then, one of the things that this, the current ordinance doesn't address is 280-105A, which says you have to be five feet from the, the right-of-way and separated by some kind of barrier. So, putting the barrier aside right now, let's say five feet. Well, typically, in a lot of these places, the right-of-way is going to be three feet from the sidewalk closer to the house. What that means is, from the sidewalk to where the current garage is, you would need at least 48 feet to satisfy this. Some of these lots are not going to satisfy that, which, again, why this ordinance isn't helping as much as it might otherwise. I mean, so, those are, those are some of the issues with it. The other one is two-family dwell, and I'm not, again, if it's for garage conversions, I see no reason for two-family dwellings. Two-family dwellings are not twins. Twins are single-family homes attached to another single family. They're semi-detached. The, the typical two-family dwelling is like an apartment or a living space on the first floor and a living space on the second floor. Most often, they're rentals. We own one, and I'll get into that in a second about how this would have an adverse impact on the township as a whole with, with things like that. So, I don't think it's appropriate for two-family dwellings, because two-family dwellings require four car spaces, because there are two dwellings there. It's, again, it's not a twin. A twin is a single-family home. And I'll get to that also in Maplewood in a second. So, those are some of the issues where it doesn't, the ordinance as written doesn't truly help the folks it's trying to help. There's other things they may, may still have to do or seek a variance on. In terms of how it has an impact upon the rest of the township, the first thing I'd like to talk about, which has been brought up, is what are some of our neighboring townships? And I went, our typical sister-brother townships, east and west. Tridiffin, East Town, and Lower Marion don't allow parking in the front yard setback with one exception. East Town allows it within the, within the driveway, but it's not a blanket. You can't, you can't create all these spaces in the front yard. Lower Marion is actually very strict, if you read the ordinance, in terms of having to go around the side. They want you parking in the rear. They don't want, you know, even side or even with the garages. So, Lower Marion's very strict. Tridiffin is pretty much like us. East Town is just slightly more lenient in terms of parking in the driveway. And they're, just to, just to give you that. But none of them have a blanket, you know, you can park anywhere in the front yard, create all these spaces. So, in terms of some of the issues it would cause across the board, one of them is somewhat mitigated by the B version, which says the single-family and two-family dwellings, which I don't agree with, that have to exist at the enactment of this ordinance. Now, there are still some developments. We brought up the Maplewood with submersion. Those are single-family dwellings, and they happen to be developed on a multiple-dwelling-unit lot. It's one lot, strangely has a street in it as opposed to a drive, because that's the way they had to do it to make it work. So, they do have front yards there. But those are single-family dwellings. And part of the, part of the density reduction there was because of where they had to put the parking, and more, more to the point, some of the overflow parking because of the, because they have garages, that says where the overflow parking has to go. So, even some of these multi-dwelling-unit developments that exist now that are still single-family homes theoretically could take, take advantage of this if they didn't have some other deed restriction or something going on like that. So, just to clarify that. I think what you're also going to see is, you're going to actually see more, more folks doing this, and it's going to be more prevalent with rentals. And I told you about, I have a rental on Bloomingdale Avenue. It's a corner lot. It has two driveways, no garage, no garages, one on West Wayne, one on Bloomingdale. If this, if this were going to effect, it would be silly of me not to put a turnaround or a parking spot right after you come in the drive and on the other side of the hedge. And that's 200, you know, 10 by 20 on, on one street and 10 by 20 the other. There's 400 impervious that had nothing to do with a garage conversion that's going to go in in this. And you're going to see that, particularly in rentals, because people, on West Wayne and some of these other streets, even Bloomingdale, that I'll say my familiar area with for rentals, they're going to do that. And some of them are actually probably going to put in curb cuts to do that, because they don't have access to their backyard, because they might be, you know, row homes, which are still single-family homes. And they might put in a curb cut, which is a double whammy, because not only are you adding impervious there, but now you've taken off-street parking away, because now there's going to be more curb cuts. And, again, you're going to see that a lot with, with rentals in this, in this particular case. It was also brought up, I think, about Conestoga. I know, I think I know the one that Kevin was referring to closer to Bloomingdale, but farther down, closer to Brook, there is parking in the front yard setback. It is outside of the right-of-way, but it's in the front yard setback. It's actually done with gravel. And that's something you're going to see a lot of. And you're going to see it in old districts. People, people that worry about snow shoveling and want to get parked closer to the, to the street at the time, or they just, they, they don't have a turnaround in the back, so they're going to put spaces there. I think you're going to see that. And that's, particularly worry about the aesthetics. And I mentioned my rental in Bloomingdale. That is actually in the hard district. And you're going to, you're going to kind of ruin the, the flow of that by seeing all these cars that can be parked right on, right on the street there, or, excuse me, not, just off the street in the front yard. The last point I want to make, oh, the site triangles. The site triangle actually expands into the front yard when you're on a corner lot. And I actually have this issue with my current resident, but just parking in the front yard can impact the site triangle, because the site triangle goes from the edge of the street, which is, the street includes the right-of-way, 30 feet in both directions, and then you draw a triangle, which encompasses front yards. So, people parking in front yards legally, because they would have this right now across the board, could very well impact site triangles for that. It usually comes into case with fences and shrubbery, but now it could come into play with cars more.
Can I ask you a quick question and ask Kevin at the same time? Kevin? A quick summary of what we're talking about here is dealing with existing conditions and not in terms of new developments, new designs, and everything else. That should be and can be addressed somewhere else, but I don't think we have to address it here. I think what we're doing here, unless I misunderstand this, what we're doing here is dealing with people that have a driveway and a garage, and they want to convert the garage. I don't see that...
This is, this is across the board. This says you can start parking, you can put parking in the front yard setback across the board for single-family and two-family dwellings in virtually every residential district. Has nothing to do with, with, you know, whether...
Well, what's the point of B, then? It says, it doesn't apply to existing properties.
Well, but...
Isn't that distinguishing between new and existing?
It is. I'm talking about existing, like, my Bloomingdale property is an existing property where I could do this. Has nothing to do with the garage conversion.
Existing, I guess it depends on how it's interpreted, but existing seems to me as existing. It's not like another, a second driveway goes in. That's the remedy when you have to go through zoning and you can't qualify without parking in the setback.
Yep.
If you're allowed to park in the setback, and you have a driveway and you're trying to save $1,000, why would you do a paving of 240 square feet for something that you don't need anymore because this new ordinance exists?
Well, first, it's the dwellings that are existing. It has nothing to do with the driveways are existing or the, anything else. It's just the dwelling had to exist.
I think that's an issue that's already, or should be, or is addressed somewhere else in our code. And if it isn't, then that's still a new ordinance. That's not, I don't think that this prevents us from doing that. And you're pointing out maybe a need that we have, but I don't think that this is really in the scope of what we're trying to do here tonight.
I, I disagree. All these existed, I said, I give you my Bloomingdale example. There's, you know, has no garages. It's, it's existing two-family dwelling.
If you were a bad landlord, couldn't you do that now? You don't need this ordinance.
Yeah, but I don't want Kevin on my case. I want to do it legally.
I mean, do it legally. Do it legally now. There's nothing that prevents you now.
Yeah, I can't, I can't have parking in the front yard setback now.
No, that's true.
That's, and that's the whole, what this is, the, what the exception of the B option, which says it's for existing single-family and two-family dwellings, this basically blankly says, in virtually all residential districts, that you, with existing single-family and two-family dwellings, you can put whatever parking you want in the front yard, anywhere in the front yard. That's what it says. And that's the way it's being, it's trying to be accomplished, as opposed to more surgical, associated, as Ms. Stern said, specifically with a garage conversion, and perhaps a, and I distributed an example of that, of an ordinance which would specifically target that. So, it wouldn't have all these unintended impact, and also would address some of those issues that I talked about, that would help the folks converting their garages, so that they wouldn't run into secondary and tertiary issues as they, as they go.
Kevin hasn't had a moment to sort of respond to that, my comment, and it was really directed to both of you, so...
Well, I, I think that, yeah, we're going to see an influx of people that aren't doing garage conversions that want to start paving over their front yard. I think that is more like a red herring to oppose an ordinance like this, that, that does more good. Are you going to have the occasional person that wants to put in an extra turnaround space in the driveway? Sure. I'm not going to sit here and say that that would never happen. But to say that a landlord's going to spend thousands of dollars just to put a parking space in, I don't think that that's, there's no gain from that. You talk about taking a car off the street and putting it on a lot, that's probably not a bad thing. You're talking about site concerns and site distances. You know, the less on-street parking you have, the better it is for kids that are going down the sidewalk and crossing the street. Concern about site triangles, we have codes that regulate what can go in a site triangle on a corner lot. You know, whether it's a tree, a shrub, a mailbox, or a car, there are codes that prevent, you know, you obstructing the site triangle. So, you know, those, there are other regulations in here that address those, those issues. This is primarily going to be utilized by those that are doing garages. Otherwise, you know, that's the only way that we've seen these triggers. I cannot say in the 10 years that I've been here, that I've denied an application because somebody wanted to expand their driveway with no other project, and we said, no, you cannot do that. This has always been associated with a building renovation project and converting their garages. Could there be one? There could be one. But it's not going to be the, this mass of applications that's being painted of coming into the township to start people paving over their driveway. Quite honestly, once you get past one or two parking spaces, you're going to start triggering stormwater management, and then the costs start getting really expensive for somebody to do that. And particularly in a rental situation, there's no, the return on that investment is, would be so minimal that I really don't envision, you know, landlords, you know, just putting in parking spaces for their units just because they feel like it. Otherwise, we would see these applications coming in, and it would be denied. This is all associated with renovation projects.
I disagree with the red herring comment. This will, I can guarantee you, this will happen. And it's not necessarily for rental getting cars or getting a car off the street or even for a, for a personal resident. If it's a single driveway, they, you know, you have to, oh, who's parked first? If it's a single driveway, you know, you have to, oh, who's parked first? I got to move out. I got to do that. So putting in a 90-degree parking so that you have one that way and one that way and they're never blocking is a big deal. And for rentals, it's, if you're, if you already have a curb cut, it's not $1,000 to put in that asphalt. It's pretty cheap to put in a parking like that. And moreover, if a rental doesn't have a parking spot, oh yeah, it's worth the money if you don't have an off-street parking. That's definitely something that a lot of renters look for. So, and it's usually not that expensive, but it's not taking, necessarily taking cars off the street. It's just going to be adding impervious and in some cases, taking away curb cuts. The last point I'll make is, one of the other unintended consequences is kind of in reverse. And I don't know if Ian's back there. I just have a diagram or a picture here.
Ian, can you zoom in on this one?
This is an example of in reverse, and what I'm going to say, so these people don't have a garage, and let's assume for the argument's sake that where the driveway widens, that they have two valid, they have two spaces there, you know, nine and a half by 20 for argument's sake right now, and they could expand it if they needed to. Right now, they're non-conforming. And if they needed, if they needed to trim that a little bit because they wanted a patio in the back, they could trim that. If the ordinance goes into effect, all of a sudden, these become their two required parking spots, and they're conforming, they can't touch this anymore, assuming it's the exact size. So it's not only helping folks become conform, or put things where they want to, but existing conditions all of a sudden can become conforming and possibly limit what they can do in the future. This is less likely, but it's also, it's just another unintended consequence is what could go on, that all of a sudden, people become conforming and they no longer have the same control that they did over this asphalt in terms of trading it for other spaces within their yard. So, I'll, let me wrap up unless you have any other questions. But I said, I did send to some of you at least, a proposed ordinance that would address the problems that I was talking about with the garage converters themselves. So not only would it help them, but it would keep them from these other problems, but it would also address these other problems that I said. And it's reality. If, you know, Kevin can say what he wants, but I know what I could do, what I would do with my Bloomingdale property because it's a problem when cars have to stack at rentals and/or back all the way out. This way, they have a place to turn around or another parking. And you're going to see this a lot, just like, you know, Matt, you saw, you see it on Conestoga where they're parking in the gravel. More people are going to do that because now it's legal. They don't have to worry about, oh, do I, you know, need to get permission for that or do I have to worry about somebody, you know, catching me?
Thank you, Baron. We'll make sure that your document gets into the record.
Thank you.
Baron, could you put that back up for a sec? Because I think that that highlights actually the exact situation that we're trying to accomplish, where, let's just say that that brown is the garage space that they want to convert. You know, in a two-car family, you know, car A comes in, pulls off to the left, car B comes in and pulls straight in. Let's say they're not using the garage. Car A still pulls off to the left, car B pulls straight in up to the garage but doesn't pull in. You've eliminated the garage space. This ordinance would allow them to continue utilizing their driveway as is with no expansion of the driveway, no change in physical appearances. We're not talking necessarily cars parked back-to-back. You have many of these situations where the driveways are already wide enough to support two cars side-by-side. They're just not utilizing the garage. So here is a perfect example of where this ordinance would allow them to convert their garage, utilize existing asphalt, and accomplish what they want to accomplish. There's always trade-offs when somebody wants to do a project. If they want to expand their driveway, they may not be able to put in a wider patio in the back. If they want to put in a patio, they may not be able to put in a pool. There's always gives and takes that somebody has to make a decision what they want to do with their projects. Every project has a limitation on impervious coverage, building coverage, setbacks, and things like that. But let the property owner make that decision and make it for them in their best interest, but allow reasonable use. And that's a perfect example of how this ordinance would allow somebody to, you know, not increase the footprint, utilize existing driveway as they're probably currently utilizing with zero changes to the visibility, zero changes to site impact, and zero changes to impervious coverage.
So Kevin, I don't know where that picture came from, but it doesn't sound like that is a typical example of what we would be talking about in the township.
It actually is.
It is?
You'd be surprised that the number of driveways that people have the ability to park side-by-side, but they have a garage space. Now, that garage space is the one conforming garage space. You eliminate that and you put them side-by-side, even though they're already parking side-by-side, you have one non-conforming and one conforming. As soon as you eliminate that garage, you would have two non-conformity, and that's where the code provision as it stands would kick into place. The amendment now makes both of those non-conforming side-by-side legal. So in many cases, it's an extension of a non-conformity, and it just becomes a legal situation or conforming situation. But this is actually, we see a lot of these, but we also see a single-loaded driveway. So it's, this isn't the unicorn where you only see a few of it. There's many examples throughout the township where people utilize their driveways in a fashion just like this with a garage conversion.
My point with this, and I don't disagree that some garage conversion would end up looking like this, not, aside from all the other issues I talked about they might have to deal with or the impact of the township. Yeah, this is what it very well could look like. But this is an existing situation where people being impacted because Kevin said, you know, let them have their choice in the trade-off. Well, this exists right now. You pass the ordinance, they don't get a chance for that trade-off anymore because they can't take away any impervious because they've got exactly two spots there, and they're conform, they would become, suddenly become conforming under this ordinance and wouldn't be able to make that trade-off later on, whereas right now, they could. Oh, we can squeeze an extra two, you know, 200 square feet off of this by trimming a little. We can still park side-by-side. They wouldn't have that option if this was exactly 19 feet wide.
Any other public comment?
James Ask. I live on Buckingham Drive in Ward 7. And again, I guess I must be one of the few remaining applicants for a garage conversion, looking to convert what is unusable garage space for a car. It's storage to living space, to increase the livable space of our home so that our family can stay in the neighborhood that we love. I think maybe one of the reasons that there are so few applications that maybe you're seeing, and it's hard to quantify few since this is my first time experiencing this, and we had thought our project would have started by now, since there are 14 homes on Buckingham Drive on our street, I would be glad to host anyone who would like to come and see it, but I'm sure you can picture the neighborhoods. Of the 14, there are four that still have a garage and zero that actually use the garage for a car. So, and I am not aware of what the, you know, what other issues this may cause throughout the township, but, you know, from my estimation, this seems like for our neighborhood at least, something that's just, you know, putting in writing what is essentially the reality of where we live. And for me, it seems, you know, in a way punitive for the four homes that are still remaining to convert, because that is the trend at this point, to throw extra steps in the way. You know, that's really all I came to say. You know, the cars are already there. They're already in the driveway where we are. Plenty of parking. There is not an overwhelming number of cars on the street where we live. And again, we're happy to show you guys around.
Is there any other commissioner comment right now?
Kevin, let me just ask you another question. With the permitted garage conversion, is that something that could or should go in here?
I don't think so. I don't, I think that's now starting to get too overly restrictive. And, you know, do I, again, as I said earlier, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that this is only going to apply and only going to see applications, but I think it's primarily going to apply to garage conversions. But I don't think we're going to see, because we already would have, that we would have seen people coming in that wanted to expand their driveways without doing this project. Most people don't look that deep into the zoning code because it is buried way in the back of the code, to know that that is something that they couldn't do, so they didn't. You know, we would see these applications coming in through the grading permit process to expand driveways, and we would be, you know, denying them at that point, but those are not in. Do we have a handful? I'm sure we are, but I don't think it's going to be painted to the extent that it was painted tonight, that, you know, people are going to be paving over their front yards and we're going to have massive parking lots and residential lots and, you know, no more trees. I really don't think that that is what we're going to see. You're going to have, yeah, a couple, sure. But primarily, these are going to be related to garage conversions.
I'm just wondering if your expected, you know, use of it would be for the permitted garage conversions and to avoid the unintended, you know, uses of it, would that be a better thing to do? Would there be a negative not to do it?
I just, I don't know that it's necessary, and I think it becomes overly restrictive, personally.
Kevin, it seems to me like this amendment would really target three neighborhoods. Why make it township-wide?
Yeah, Conestoga Village, Garrett Hill, and South Devon. But in those areas, you see a mix of zoning districts. And you're going to have those, you know, in other areas of the township, older homes that it could apply to, and now you're, again, you're singling out that individual that may not be at the same situation, that have the long extended driveways and fortunate enough, and now you're creating a hardship for them. You know, if it helps one or two of those residents in those districts but doesn't apply to the other 98%, then it doesn't apply to them, and those people aren't going to do it anyway. But then why not help those 2% that could take advantage of it if they need to?
Okay, thank you.
My two cents on this is that, one, for if you're going to take your proposal and basically add language about conversion to, you know, a living space, what's the difference between living space or as well as a couple of the other people said, hey, you know what? My existing garage right now is antiquated because of size or dimensions or whatever it is. I'm using it as storage. I have a growing family. What's the, in my mind, what's the difference between converting that to current storage space because I have young kids and I have a tremendous amount of stuff I'm using there, or if I'm converting it into an additional living room or expanding whatever space? In my mind, what's the difference? If I'm a homeowner, I use that space how well I want to use it rather than having someone else dictating that. My second point is that with your ordinance, what I would like to see is that if you are expanding the driveway, adding asphalt or whatever, I would think that has to be just basically pervious, you know, in order to basically have additional stormwater flow off, basically have, basically it has to be either gravel or some sort of situation where the additional, you know, you're having some additional green space that you still use. It's not complete asphalt. That's the only thing I would like to be added into this. Thank you.
Any other commission comment? So we have, I think, Mary, you can back me up on this, or Kevin, you too. We have three ways to go here. We can approve this ordinance rewrite. We can ask--
You can recommend approval. You can recommend denial, or you can recommend amendment. Is that--
Right. And what I was thinking was, if we recommended amendment, could we have a crack at it? Could the planning commission have a crack at that?
Well, that's actually a question for the Board of Commissioners. They sent it to you for review. If your recommendation comes back that you would like to have an opportunity to explore it further and possibly make amendments to it, the Board of Commissioners can give you the opportunity to do that, or it can adopt the ordinance as it is. That's--
Right. Well, I personally would like to take a crack at it. But I'm speaking for myself. And we could, we could, how does that work, Mary? If we ask for that, if that's our recommendation, that we take a crack at it, would we get on the calendar? Like, would it be May that we produce something or?
It is May.
I mean, June, I'm sorry.
Is that then a denial tonight?
Yes. It's a table, really, like, I think, right.
Well, you're not recommending approval. Your recommendation would be, it's not exactly a denial. It would be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that the planning commission be given the opportunity to explore this topic and possibly make amendments to the ordinance.
Right. And the reason I'm asking for that is because I've heard some things tonight that I hadn't heard before that were interesting. I've also feel like, like I said before, that this sort of just jumped up into the planning commission purview without a lot of warning. So, like, I'd just like to take a little more time. I would like to, I would just like to understand this better. I would like to maybe put something into this ordinance amendment. I don't know. But I would like, that's what I'm asking. So I'd have to ask the other commissioners whether they would like that.
If you're asking me from a legal standpoint, if that's a legal option, yes, with the caveat that the Board of Commissioners could say, I like the ordinance the way it is, we're going to vote on it.
Correct. Understood. So--
Make a motion?
Would you like to make a motion?
I disagree.
Well, then, you don't make the motion. I mean, maybe, look--
I'm in favor of moving forward with option B, but--
I'm in favor of moving forward with option B.
Can we make a motion for the suggestion to amend and then vote for that? And see where we stand? So two more.
If you're talking about amending, what are some of your ideas for the amendment? Well, I think it's, like I said before, I think this is a ordinance that should be designed around garage conversions. I mean, I think we should just call that out because I'm, what I'm hearing is that that's pretty much it. That's what's driving this. And I haven't heard anyone say that something else is driving it. So I think we should, we should be honest about it and say, this is, this ordinance rewrite has to do with garage conversions. And that entails a lot of things, like what garage are you talking about? There's all sorts of things that I haven't had time to really process in terms of like--
Sure.
And I think what's really driving this is I feel rushed. As a chair of this commission, I don't like it. Just don't like it. So you guys can decide what you want. No. For my two cents is that I won't disagree with you about being rushed, and I appreciate that you want more time to do that. With regard to, as I said, my own two cents is that having this thing basically contingent upon conversion versus storage, like what we heard earlier, to me, what's the difference? If me as a landlord, I shouldn't have basically be restricted one way or the other, saying it's like, okay, if I'm using it for current storage right now, I'm basically out of, it's not conforming. But however, if I want to use it for, convert it into an addition, some living space, then it becomes conforming. I still have, it's still my home. It's, I still have issues where the space is antiquated. What am I going to do with it? I have a crib. I have some kids, voluminous kid stuff. I want to put it in there temporarily. To me, that's basically, that's overreach.
Although I will say this, though. In, my feeling is that there's the two things. There's the good of the whole, and there's special exceptions. And in this township, I think the good of the whole overrides special exceptions every time. And I think that if we're looking at five to seven cases since the beginning of the year, we're almost halfway through 2022, it just seems like maybe we should just leave it alone and let the, let people seek a variance or let them go to the zoning board. I mean, that's, that's, that's an option, that leave it alone. I mean, that's a system that's in place. Is it, does it protect the good interests of the whole? Apparently.
Well, it also goes back to the fact is that if you, if you do have some, you know, with what you're trying to do and your space is antiquated and you're trying to use it for whatever reason that you want as a homeowner to do, right now is that the space is not conforming. So to basically have conforming, you have to go to the cost, the effort, the brain damage to do that. So I think with what-- So I think with, with what Kevin has provided here, I think it gets, it gets you there to allowing people to be where they need to be and having, actually having a real conforming. The only thing I would like to add is go back to my earlier comments, is that I'm not a fan of impervious. I would just love to basically have something where the natural, you know, the ground will actually be able to drain rather than having additional stormwater flow.
And we looked at that. There was one project that got flagged early on and they ended up putting in a subsurface grass paved system. While it's considered 100% impervious, I had grave concerns because they're, they're basically plastic pieces that stick up and, you know, I'm worried about that in a residential application for kids. He didn't seem to be too concerned about it, but I wouldn't want to walk on that on barefoot. When you get into pervious pavers, you know, A, you have to make sure that your ground perks, otherwise it's going to be a useless system. And we know we've had, and the Board of Commissioners have seen a fair share of waivers coming in from the impervious side of the house. And then the maintenance and upkeep of those in a residential application, it's great for the first owner that wants to do it and they're aware of it. The second, third, and fourth owner, they're like, oh, the driveway needs to be seal coded. There's not a permit for that and next thing you know that, you know, because we're not out monitoring that, that your system is now no longer pervious because it's been seal coded. So, commercial applications is a little easier to maintain, those sorts of things. There are applications in residential, but not, I don't foresee it in this type of situation.
That's a fair comment.
I'd like to just make a quick comment. My name is Anna Marie Jones. I'm a Commissioner on the Board of Commissioners. And so, I think it was March 14th that this came to us and that it was introduced to us. And I think that there has been ample time for you guys to reach out to Kevin. I don't know if anyone has, but I don't agree that you haven't had time to think about this. I think that this has been out there for the last two months. So you, this could have been a discussion already. I think that, you know, dragging this on and asking to be able to amend this when there are people trying to do a project that would benefit their family is a bit egregious to me.
I can't disagree with you more, Anna. But that's as far as I'm going to take it. We can take it off-site if you want. But our job is to vet planning, zoning issues. Our job is, we didn't meet last month.
I understand you didn't meet, but you could have still had, you know, a discussion with Kevin if you had not, if this is something that was, you know, concerning to you. That's all I have to say.
So, as a compromise, can we basically allow us, allow you to do with, give you further thought or the rest of the members with coming back in June? Would that work, Commissioner Jones?
So my issue is that you're now asking people who want to move along with a project to wait another month or so. Is that what you're saying? Or do you want us to meet about this and give you an answer?
Let me just jump in.
In the next meeting? Is that what you're asking?
I'm suggesting that four weeks from now, when we meet, first week of June, that we would have a, we would be able to bring this to a bona fide vote and pass it one way or the other.
Well, you know, the Board of Commissioners would have to have a discussion about that. So, that would come up in our next meeting, next week.
So that would be my preference, is to table this tonight, to come back in June with a red line of the ordinance and ask the BOC if we could do that.
Don, you have to bring that to a vote among us, or?
Yes.
So you want a motion?
Yes.
So that would be the motion, right? That we would take the-
How about if MJ makes a motion and you guys can decide if that's what you wanted to say?
I'm new at this, so this will be rusty. I'd like to make a motion to table the vote on the ordinance amendment 2022-4 and consider it pending authorization by the Board of Commissioners.
Just one amendment to that. It would be O4 and O4B.
Correct.
Call-in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that, that was five, five to one. Discussion item two is One Pennsylvania Avenue zoning hearing board application. Thanks for wading through this, guys. Nick, how are you?
I wasn't going to comment, but I thought it was my place.
I'm sorry, Nick. Can I just have a moment on this topic before, before you start your presentation? Because I think it's been a really long time since you've looked at a zoning hearing board application that was not a variance. And this is a request for a special exception. So, I know you don't like to get too deep in the weeds on zoning hearing board applications, but please keep in mind that Mr. Canely's burden here is not a hardship burden. He doesn't have to prove that he can't use his property, except for the grant of the variance. This is a special exception, which is a form of a permitted use, which means as long as he shows compliance with the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance that are applicable to his application, he is entitled to the relief requested. So in this case, this is under the nonconforming use section, and I think there's three small items, and Nick's going to go through those items as part of his presentation, I'm sure. But I just wanted you to, to make sure that you understood that you're not looking for a hardship here.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Nick Canely represented the applicant on this matter. This is One Pennsylvania Avenue. If you're heading up North Wayne Avenue away from the middle of Wayne, it seems to go under the train tracks. To the right, it's the first building on the right. Actually, a lot of you know it as John's Market, which is on the ground floor. Currently existing on the site is John's Market and three apartments. Proposal here is to add a fourth apartment. There would not be any addition to the footprint of the building. There would be additional impervious that would be just for the two additional parking spaces required by code for the additional unit. And as Mary mentioned, we'd be asking for a special exception. There's a couple standards. One is that it's not, we can expand a nonconforming use. It's not materially detrimental to the character of the surrounding area. It cannot be increased by more than 50%. It shall conform the area height and setback regulations and no more than one extension shall be granted. We comply with all these requirements. This is zoned R5, which permits the multiple-family use. The nonconformity is the retail use of John's Market. That is staying, that is staying the same size. Currently, the third floor of the building is vacant and not used. That will be converted into the fourth apartment. And there will be small additions to the building on top of the existing building that would make the units, I believe, two of the units slightly larger than what they are right now. So just looking at the plan, here's the existing building. There is an area already, a paved area, that fits approximately three parking spaces. This line here, just so you're aware, is the floodplain line. We're not adding any disturbance in the floodplain. We're staying out of the floodplain. The existing three parking spaces appear to be in the floodplain. The two additional parking spaces indicated by this crosshatched area are new. They are outside the floodplain. And also, there's a small widening of the existing driveway along Pennsylvania Avenue. As I mentioned, you're coming out of the railroad tracks here. Poplar Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue, railroad tracks here. This is right on the corner of that proposal. Looking further at the plans, it'll show where the addition is located. On the second floor proposed plan, you see a new addition right here that is basically on top of the existing building. And on the third floor plan, the existing is indicated in this area here, which is only approximately one bedroom. So the expansion, additional nonconformity is approximately 120 feet plus 280 feet, 300 and, I would say it's approximately 440 feet is the additional area that's being devoted to the additional area. And that's much less than 50% of the existing area. And you can see on this plan here, you'll see on the one side of the building, the new roof dormer addition. And then you see on this side of the building, this addition in this area right here, which is really a second floor and this, and just an extension of the roof area. So the addition is here and here.
That's going to be on top of John's Mar, okay.
That's correct. That's on top of John's. And as Mary mentioned, 101A2 deals with nonconforming uses and the first one is not materially detrimental to the character of the surrounding area. As I mentioned, this is already a multiple-family area. It is zoned R5. The area devoted to nonconforming use shall be no more than 50% and is much less than 50%. It shall conform the area heightened setback regulations, which it does, and that no more than one extension. And this is the first extension to this building.
So, Nick, does the market area, the commercial space, does that impact on the size, on how much space you have for the fourth apartment?
It is remaining the same, the market area. We're not changing that.
Right. But I thought I read somewhere in the code that, like, when you have a commercial space, you have to adjust your, your additional residential space by the square feet of the commercial space?
Yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, there are requirements in the code, as Kevin knows, regarding how large your room sizes can be and how large your apartment sizes can be. And we're not asking for any relief on that.
Okay, great.
So that, that may be what you're referencing.
Maybe that's it.
There is in the R5 section, there is reference to minimum room sizes and minimum apartment sizes.
But you're not there, you're not there.
Yeah, we're not being affected by that.
Any Commissioner comment? I do. What size unit you're going to be looking to build? One bedroom, two bedroom? Cory?
Brad. Good evening. Brad Jureczy. I'm the architect so far on the project here. So what we are looking to do on that third floor, and I'm going to go to the page here so you can see it. This is that third floor unit. So you can see the two bedrooms that are being proposed for that unit there.
And the other, the other three minutes?
Exactly. So on the second floor here, this is one unit that we have outlined, and that would be a two-bedroom unit. We are looking to increase the size of the existing one-bedroom unit that's there. So we're looking to improve the size of that unit to come into better compliance with the zoning regulations you were just referring to. And then the existing second floor unit that you could see outlined here, no, that is unit number two, that's existing to remain.
Okay.
And then on the ground floor, the ground floor unit here is unit number one, existing to remain. We are looking to increase the footprint by just a few square feet to just improve the layout of that.
So, so with the, the unit that you're looking to make it larger, I guess, was on the second floor?
Yes.
How much, how much additional square footage?
So if you look, the new unit would be 765.
All in?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that will remain still as a one-bedroom?
No. So the existing is 418 square.
Nick, can you make sure that he's in the mic, please?
Yep. The existing is 418 square feet.
So it's gone from 418 to 7?
65.
765.
Correct.
And then on top of it, you're also going to be building a new unit, that's going to be a new two-bedroom unit, right?
Correct. 804 square feet for that one.
So, in my mind, it looks like you're going to be picking up a total new three bedrooms. Where I'm getting at is parking. So if you're going to have three new parking spaces, right, where, where on Pennsylvania Avenue or was it Pop, Pop, Poplar, where you're going to be able to park those three cars?
So, per the code, our requirement is to provide two additional parking spaces for the new unit.
So where were those two spaces? Where will they be again?
Sure. So there is, there is no existing parking where we're showing those two new spaces.
Okay. I know where that is.
So actually, if I jump back to this existing survey here?
Yeah.
This was showing a preliminary, two new spaces here, but that does not exist. So the only existing, I could use that, thanks. The existing is the outline of this there.
And that's just basically just a, is that a yard right now, or?
It's a, it's a paved concrete drive area, I guess.
How many square feet?
Is the existing?
No, the new, the new.
The new?
The new parking?
Yeah. 1,120?
That's the new impervious coverage that we're proposing to, to provide those two new spaces.
So are you going to provide a retention basin and all that?
So we are under the 1,500 square feet that's required, the threshold for stormwater.
There's lots of flooding on Plant Avenue.
There is stormwater still required because of River 500. Just not as significant as it would be if we're over 1,500. So there is, there will be stormwater management provided here for the new spaces.
David, just to clarify, where you're talking about building is, is yard. It's just grass, right?
Correct. Currently where those parking spaces are is just grass currently. And this is existing paving here.
And just to clarify, that parking is not in the front yard. Setback on this one, just to, what you're looking at there is simply just paving area.
Parked many times there, eating a John's Hoagie sandwich, so. Speaking of Johns, what about the, the structure itself? Can that handle the load? Has that been tested?
So we would make that, any structural modifications required to add on on top of there, yes.
So our job tonight is just to make a recommendation to zoning or not recommend?
You, you have three options. You can be neutral. You can be neutral with conditions, or you can recommend denial. Or I guess you could actually recommend supporting it, but that doesn't happen very often.
Oh.
Like to make a motion? In the matter of additions and alternations to One Pennsylvania Avenue, like to make a motion to stay neutral.
Second? Call-in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, we didn't ask for any public comment, but I don't think there is, right? So old business, we don't have any new business. We'll be creating, I guess I'll take the lead on this, creating a bit of a red line in that ordinance and pass it around. So we're all on the same page for next meeting. Can we, can I also just bring up a subject matter of which to further start the conversation about ESG methodology with, with either new renovations and certainly new, new building construction? new, new building construction. So ESG refers to E for sustainability, S for social programs, and G for governance, but I am just talking specifically about sustainability in order to reduce the carbon footprint. This is something that is going on throughout the United States, throughout the rest of the world, and this is just something I think we should, as a community, we should start talking about. In addition, someone brought up the subject matter about EV stations. That's something else, given that the proliferation, the number of electronic vehicles that are driving throughout the streets within our community, this is something else I think we should also be discussing as a planning, as a planning commission as well. So, these are things I would like to put on the agenda for the June meeting.
That's great, David. And also, I, we would probably try to figure out what's going on with, there's a special committee on Green, I think, 2035, or, I'm probably butchering this, but, yeah, Sarah Pilling was one of the leaders of that effort, and I don't know where that stands. So we would definitely want to, you know, sort of collide with those guys as well. So, great. Make sure that's on the agenda.
Thank you.
So, I guess we're adjourned. All right. Thank you all.